I know you folks.
A long time.
We made it, made it through dinner.
Well done.
Starts instead of seven o'clock starts because we're going to have to drive anywhere to go eat.
Yeah, I just sped through the drive-through.
Where'd you go?
KFC.
I went to the fridge.
Fridge, my fridge is empty, so.
Yeah, the difference between these meetings and our regular meetings is we normally don't face each other.
That's true.
Members, we're starting recording now. If you're ready, I'll go ahead and hit record.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Kathy.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Waukam County Council meeting for July 7th, 2020. Please call the roll.
Red Brown. Barry Buchanan.
Here.
Tyler Bird. Todd Donovan.
Here.
Ben Ellenboss.
Here.
Carol Frazi.
Here.
Kathy Kerschner. Tyler Bird. Kathy Kerschner. Looks like maybe they haven't joined us yet. You're muted.
Sorry about that. We'll just announce them as they arrive. We have a couple of things to do before we get going. We have, is Nan with us?
Yes, I'm here.
We have a, somebody that needs to be read into the record, and I'll let her explain that, and then she can do the, read it into the record. I'll turn it over to you, Nan.
Thank you. Nan Kalunki, HR Associate Manager. I'm here today to read a notice from the Public Employees Relations Commission regarding an unfair labor practice. I'm to read the notice verbatim. It's ordered by the commission, so I'm going to begin reading the notice now. It'll be included in the council minutes. So it's notice to employees of unfair labor practice. It's case number 131-286-U-19, decision number 13082-A. And it reads as follows: State law gives you the right to self-organize, join, or assist labor or employee organizations, bargain collectively through a representative of your choice, refuse to pay dues to a union unless you have affirmatively agreed to make such payment. The Washington State Public Employment Relations Commission, PERC, conducted a legal proceeding, issued a ruling that Waukam County committed an unfair labor practice, and ordered that this notice be posted to employees. We unlawfully deducted the employee share of the paid family and medical leave premiums from employee paychecks. We unlawfully failed or refused to bargain in good faith with the Waukam County Deputy Sheriff's Guild over the decision to deduct the employee share and the amount of employee premiums for the paid family and medical leave premium. To remedy our unfair labor practice, we will give notice to and upon request, negotiate in good faith with the Waukam County Deputy Sheriff's Guild, including mediating and pursuing interest arbitration if necessary, before implementing the employee-paid family and medical leave premium. We will make employees whole by reimbursing employees for any employee PFML premiums deducted from their wages beginning January 4th, 2019. Back pay shall be computed in conformity with WAC 39145410. We will restore the status quo ante by reinstating the wages, hours, and working conditions that existed for the employees in the affected bargaining unit prior to the unilateral change that occurred when the employer began deducting the maximum employee contribution to the paid family and medical leave premium fund unlawful in this order. We will not in any other manner interfere with restraining or coercing employees in the exercise of their collective bargaining rights under the laws of the state of Washington. Waukam County signed by Karen Goins, HR manager, on June 11th, 2020. That's the end of the notice.
Okay, thank you, Nan.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I see for the record that Councilmember Bird had joined us, and then he disappeared. Oh, there he is. Went to write in between myself and Carol. Okay, I want to turn it over to executives to do. He had something he would like to say about the Waukam Unified Command.
Yeah, good evening, council. I left my notes there, but I remember what I was gonna say, so I'll just say verbatim. The thing is that last time when we talked about, there was a couple of questions from the council about mobilization, demobilization. I just wanted you to know that we have been, we meet every week. The executive board, which consists of the mayor of Bellingham and Sheriff Bill Elfo, myself, and Chair of Lamination, or their representatives. So we are extending that the WAC should stay till end of this year in their function, but we will have it reduced to function. And we have created a nimble organization so that we can expand their role on need basis. Like, just the last three weeks, as we have seen some increase, and we discussed earlier in the day about the drive-through testing, things like that will come up, and WAC will participate on need basis as much as needed. At the same time, the Health Department and Unified Command work together. Health Department will share or work on, predominantly on the medical issues. And all the logistic procurement and other issues, the WAC members will work. Or logistics, they will work. There have been some reduction of the people, and which is totally understandable. But the preference is that we are writing a memo to all the cities, all the people, organizations who contributed or send their people to Unified Command. But if the need arises, that they agree that they will resend or or assign those people back to the Unified Command if so needed. That's all I have, and I think we are just preparing ourselves to the end of the year because the CARES Act dollars allow us to do that. And we think that we should be prepared for fall in case the second wave comes in. We are still in the first wave, which is kind of up and down. And we are learning, every day goes by, we are learning something new. We are learning something new, not only about COVID, about our actions and our reactions, and how we should be prepared. As we got the 10,000 masks which we ordered, these are the cloth masks, they were distributed. In addition to that, we received 138,000 masks, cloth masks, through the state. And they are available, and they will be, and all the parties have been informed. When needed, they can be distributed in a very short period of time. I mentioned to you before about the Byron Street. We have extended that till end of this year because that is one of the essential conditions of us in Phase Two. I don't have anything other than that right now, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions for executives to do? Okay, we'll move on. Our next item is minutes. We have 10 sets of minutes to approve. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Frazi moves, Donovan seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazi.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner. Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent. We'll move to our public hearings. The public hearings we're having tonight are being held virtually, being Zoom webinar. For more information on how to join the meeting, visit www.waukamcounty.us/joinvirtualcouncil. At this time, would everyone please disable your video, including council members? And we're going to run the short instructional video on how the public can log on and testify. So go ahead.
Welcome to the meeting. For instructions on how to join the meeting to speak, please visit waukamcounty.us/joinvirtualcouncil. Meeting information, including Zoom meeting link, phone number, webinar or meeting ID, and password are available under the meeting date at the bottom of the page. Members of the public may join the meeting online or by phone. The meeting is broadcast live and recorded. All speakers will have three minutes. When you've joined the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to request to speak. To virtually raise your hand online, click the hand icon at the lower area of your screen. To virtually raise your hand by phone, dial star nine on your keypad. Council staff will call on you by the name listed, or if you're joining by phone, by the last three digits of the phone number from which you're calling. When called upon to speak, click the microphone icon to unmute, or if joining by phone, wait till you hear a message indicating the host unmuted your phone. Please first state your full name for the record. Staff will announce when your three-minute speaking time is up. Camera sharing will not be offered at this meeting. Thank you for joining the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Our first public hearing is AB 2020-064. It's an ordinance finalizing a revised system of assessment for drainage improvement district number five. And do we have any kind of a staff report?
Yeah, Paula Harris with Public Works, and this is basically as the county engineer responsible for special districts. Periodically, we do kind of a review of the assessment mechanism, and we did this for all the other districts that we work with, dike and drainage, a few years back, where we actually were able to automate the process. It used to be a manual role maintaining a process, and we were able to automate it so we could use GIS. But this one district, we basically needed the parcel coverage to be fixed before we could automate it because there were some small parcels and they just weren't lining up because the parcel coverage was not well-aligned. So this is basically just taking care of that last district, making it an automatable role so we can use GIS, and making it more accurate and fair. Any questions?
Councilmember Donovan.
So the ordinance, it has been ordinance, but it actually has to list every single address of people in the district? Because it's not aiming to move in and out of the district, it's just, it's hard for me to understand. I mean, I support it, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, there's an assessment role that when the mechanism is changed, we need to take that to this public hearing, basically. So every year when we do it, we don't have to, I mean, we generate that role in our office. Travis Bauma is here and can give you more detail if need be, but we generate that role through the GIS routines that we developed every year. But if we're actually changing the mechanism, which we are because we actually are now, we have a one acre minimum, so there are these kind of small lots that are in the no benefit zone, but they contribute runoff. So the district commissioners actually voted to support a one acre minimum, so it's like a $5 parcel charge for those smaller lots, just to acknowledge that they're actually contributing water into the system.
Councilmember Ellenboss.
Hi, Paula. So yeah, I was trying to figure this out too. I was assuming that we were changing the rate that they charged, but we're just changing the way that the distribution is. The rate hasn't changed.
So basically, the district commissioners, they set the dollar amount of how much revenue they want to collect a year, and then this mechanism that we use apportions that dollar amount between all the different, based on how many acres they have and what the benefit zone they're in. So if you're, you know, real low area in a drainage district, you have a higher benefit zone than if you're up on the hill.
Any other questions from council members? Seeing none, let's open the public hearing. Kathy, do we have anyone with their hands raised, or?
Yes, we do. We have two hands raised currently. I'm uncertain if they would like to speak at this particular public hearing, so I'll start and unmute them, and they can indicate if they are wishing to speak during this public hearing. I have Richard Palillo. Richard Palillo, are you intending to speak at this particular public hearing?
Yes, I am. Is it okay if I start? Yeah, my name is Richard Palillo. My wife Nora and I, in our 80s, we moved to Washington around 1977. And the last 38 years, paying taxes here as residents of Waukam County in Bellingham and County. I'm a retired aviation safety inspector and honored to be a current member of the International Society of Aviation Safety Investigators. I have studied and I know risk management. I'm here to ask the members of the council, request and pass motion for legislation that encourages safe visitation of my very dear wife Nora of 60 years and her family members. She now, as well as other family members who experience the same thing, she now resides with advanced stages of dementia at Silverado, her daughter in Bellingham. The personnel staff are very competent, well-trained for these very most difficult tasks. There's not been any cases of COVID-19 there. In May, I made several calls to County Executive to do. Weeks later, I called again, and I did get a response in June saying that he suggested FaceTime, but because of her, the advanced dementia, it wasn't possible. He also suggested that Erica Lautenbach contact me for counseling and getting this squared away. Never heard anything. And these recent FaceTimes, though, gave me a glimpse of Nora because surprisingly, she was able to see me. It's not very personal, though, being removed this way. I believe I maybe can make Nora still smile, but for how long? Time marches on fast with this disease. Each of you was sent a very personal, explicit email explaining our family experiences. I hope you read it. There's been no responses to date. I want to see my dear wife Nora before further dementia advances her demeanor. Other families share the same experience as well, I'm sure. There are precautions and tests that assure that the safest procedures are taken and could apply to family visitation. I plead your important response to help pass a motion for safe visitation of spouses and family members of advance. At a recent meeting, the council was directed to ponder the use of $16 million worth of federal money available in June for COVID-19 use. Could this apply for this purpose? Therefore, please, I ask the council for your consideration and determination, not only as members, but as a community family, to make family visitation a top priority. Thank you.
Councilmember Buchanan, we have one other attendee with their hand raised.
Okay.
Doug Gustafson, if you are wishing to speak on the public hearing for Drainage District number five, could you please let us know? Doug, I've unmuted and allowed you to talk if you wish.
Okay, all I'm saying is I thought this was the general public comment, but it's about a specific subject. So I'll lower my hand, and I'm willing to speak when that time is appropriate. So the next one.
Thank you, Doug. We'll call you during open session. I have no other attendees, Councilmember Buchanan, no other attendees with their hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then we will close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Ben, that cow's not moving at all. Okay, please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazi.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner. Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan. Todd Donovan. You're muted.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I got it backwards here.
Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent.
Thank you.
Next is AB 2020-213. It's an ordinance authorizing installation of stop signs on truck roads. Could we get a staff report if there is one?
Good evening, council. Jim Card, your Public Works Engineering. I have no staff report, but I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions before we open the hearing? Okay, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone with their hands raised for this hearing?
There are no hands raised at this time, but if anyone would like to speak, please click the hand icon at the lower area of your screen, or press star nine to raise your hand by phone. I don't see any hands raised at this time, council member.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion from the council.
Move to approve. We're second, whichever. I think Bird moved, I seconded.
Bird moves, Donovan seconds. Discussion. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Carol Frazi.
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner. Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent. We'll now move to the open session. I guess go ahead and run that video one more time, Kathy, and then we'll move into open session.
Would council members please turn off their videos while I run the, turn off their cameras while I run the video? Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. For instructions on how to join the meeting to speak, please visit waukamcounty.us/joinvirtualcouncil. Meeting information, including Zoom meeting link, phone number, webinar or meeting ID, and password are available under the meeting date at the bottom of the page. Members of the public may join the meeting online or by phone. The meeting is broadcast live and recorded. All speakers will have three minutes. When you've joined the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to request to speak. To virtually raise your hand online, click the hand icon at the lower area of your screen. To virtually raise your hand by phone, dial star nine on your keypad. Council staff will call on you by the name listed, or if you're joining by phone, by the last three digits of the phone number from which you're calling. When called upon to speak, click the microphone icon to unmute, or if joining by phone, wait till you hear a message indicating the host unmuted your phone. Please first state your full name for the record. Staff will announce when your three-minute speaking time is up. Camera sharing will not be offered at this meeting. Thank you for joining the meeting.
Okay, now we will open up the open session, and Kathy, I'll turn it over to you to call on folks.
Our first speaker is Doug Gustafson. I'll unmute you, and if you could state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
You guys can hear me, right? Oh, one sec. You guys can hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, this is Doug Gustafson, chairman of Homes Now, Not Later. As many people on this call know, and some may not know, Homes Now and Not Later currently manages Unity Village tiny home community in Fairhaven, the first tiny home community in Bellingham. Unity Village has been in operation since August of 2019. We provide emergency housing for people who are homeless. In that time, Unity Village has been in operation, there has not been a single police call. Multiple residents of Unity Village have also found permanent housing, employment opportunities, and a stable living situation while looking to upgrade to permanent housing. Unity Village has enhanced the community without high costs and have only added and improved to the overall community. Bellingham Chief of Police has indicated that everywhere Homes Now has been hosted, that crime has gone down in their surrounding area, sometimes by as much as 30%. Homes Now has proven that we can operate and thrive in an environment of crisis and emergency, and we're looking to do more as the need increases. With budgets getting tight, as emergency funds running out potentially later, as well as unemployment increasing, leading to homelessness, the city of Bellingham and other towns in Waukam County, as well as the county government in general, should look for innovative solutions to help solve the problem of homelessness without breaking the bank. We also need solutions that are conducive to social distancing, such as tiny homes or sanctioned encampments, because each person gets their own space and naturally is quarantined from others in comparison to standard sheltering options, where often many people are in one room. The city and the county should be looking for bang-for-buck solutions. We're ready to help where it makes sense. The city of Bellingham and Waukam County, as well as smaller cities in the county, in addition to local organizations, should work together to designate publicly sanctioned encampment sites for agencies such as Homes Now or any other agency of a similar manner to operate. in order to get more people off the streets and back to their lives. Homes Now is willing to set up the first new site in addition to our current site as a template for future sites to work as a proof of concept. This type of program is beneficial in key areas regarding health, public safety, and environmental impacts. When more people who are homeless have somewhere to go and someone to help them get back on their feet, it will be better for the community in general. Those who are facing homelessness in the overall community as well. We have previously spoken to county executives, Sat Paul Sidu, as well as some council members about the possibility of wanting to do this. We are ready and able to make progress on this vital issue if we are given the chance. Our main barrier is land. If the county could designate some sites for this purpose, all we need is the basic hookups for water and electricity to support around 20 tiny homes. We can take care of the rest and create a win-win for everyone. Please consider it. Thank you.
Councilmember, our next speaker is Kathy Sable. I don't have any other speakers with their hands raised after Kathy Sable goes. I have after Kathy Sable will be Mary McIntosh. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand virtually by clicking the hand icon in the lower area of your screen. And we'll call on you. Let's see, after Mary, we'll have Marcus D. And so Kathy Sable, I'll go ahead and unmute. Kathy Sable, you can go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, go ahead. Please, you have three minutes.
Okay, Kathy Sable, I'm a citizen of Wacca County. I was listening earlier today to the Council's Committee of the Whole when they talked about the AB 2020-234, which is guidance using Executive Sat Paul's priorities. And I wasn't clear after leaving that meeting if there'll be another discussion on it, if that was just a recommendation to the whole council in the evening or how that works. So I was going to make a comment that I think it, the version I saw, I would like to recommend an amendment that, because WRIA is spelled incorrectly on that last bullet, it's W-R-I-A and one is our region. And that bullet about policy and planning for all stakeholders needs more definition because I think a lot of people have different perceptions of what's a stakeholder. On the WRIA management board, that's only government groups along with the Salmon Recovery co-managers. Whereas in the WRIA One Planning Unit, there is a mixture of people who have interests in water in the county along with government groups and government agencies. For example, Draining and Deckage Port of Bellingham Water Districts are not on that board. And I would believe they would be considered stakeholders along with the Private Well Owners Caucus, Non-Governmental Water Systems, Forestry Caucus, Agricultural Caucus, Environmental Caucus, Land Development, and Fishers. All of those have distinct caucuses that participate in the planning unit. So I would appreciate if that could be amended to define stakeholders. It's something that I think there's been a lot of discussions on, and I can give you examples if you want to know where I would consider, I participate with the Private Well Owner Caucus and I would consider us a stakeholder, and yet we have been excluded in some discussions. So I would love if you would add that definition. I appreciate your time with all these virtual meetings. I'm having a little bit of a hard time. So I appreciate you doing these meetings still. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary McIntosh. I'll unmute you. Mary McIntosh?
Hello, this is Mary McIntosh. I am a resident of the county. I live out in Southern Valley. I'm also a real estate agent and I work in the Bellingham area. I'd like to discuss the homeless problem. It is a big concern for many of the client, my clients who are relocating from out of state and they witness the people on the streets. There is a way to get them off the streets and what I would like to present is is an option for the more tiny home villages to be built like Unity Village that is run by Homes Now Not Later. That option removes the people from the street completely and allows them to get their lives together, allows them to have a place to leave their stuff and a door they can lock and gain some dignity. It also doesn't give them, or it removes them from the only option being the mission, which is a religious organization. And there should be other options for people who may not want to be partake in a religious organization for a place for shelter. There, if there were cute tiny home villages, just like Unity Village spread throughout the county, that would solve so much of this homeless problem and remove the people from the streets. Sweeps are happening and that is at a high cost of taxpayer money in order to move people from one side of the street to the other side of the street. There's absolutely nothing to gain for this and that isn't what we should be spending our money on. Money would be much better spent putting it into these people once they're into their tiny home villages, giving them a chance with social workers and other people to aid them getting back on their feet and becoming a part of our community again. That's all that I have to say right now. Thank you so much for, oh, the CARES money. I would love it if the CARES money could help in this, the building of these tiny homes. Of course, donations could be used like it was for Unity Village, but if the CARES money could be put towards this, that would be a great use of that money. And it is a significantly different way than was budgeted that this money could be used. And that is one of the requirements for this CARE money spending. And the homeless problem is a huge thing that needs to be taken care of. And this would provide them space away from each other with barriers between each other, plus all the other benefits of them having their own tiny home. Please take this into consideration and let's put the homeless back on into discussions and back into our forefront of our minds. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Marcus D. Marcus, if you could state your full name for the record?
Hi, Marcus D. Stidham here. I actually sit on the Homeless Strategies Work Group as well as I'm the Vice Chair for Homes Now and the Program Director there. I'm glad to address this esteemed council. It's been some time for me to be here with you all and I appreciate the work that you do. I, I'm speaking with my hat of the homeless advocate right now in Wacca County in that I have been, and I'm putting us all kind of, I'm trying to let everybody know, put everybody on notice that as Mary just mentioned, we are having what can only be called sweeps actually in the streets right now. We have, we have the policies not being enacted on the ground. I have, as homeless advocate, asked to be out on the ground with, with the cleanups officers, the cleanup officers. And I, and I've had two opportunities to do so over, over two weeks apart. And I, I did it with all open heart and, and and the officers, for the most part, really, really, really transparent and wonderful and full of compassion. What we have going on is the policy is just that it is being touted and is, that we're supposed to be following by the BPD is not making to the ground. And so we're actually sweeping on a backlog of everything that, of everything that they'd passed before when they stopped doing cleanups. They're just going back on every single complaint. So these are complaint-driven sweeps and they clean up everything. So if you call the cops, if you see a tarp, you call the cops, they're going to clean it up within a week. That's what you have in Bellingham. And that's against CDC recommendations. It's against the Wacca County Health Department's recommendations. And it's against the policy as stated by Chief Dahl. I am suggesting, I just want you to know that this is what I'm doing. This is the work we're all doing together. I want Unified Command to know about this. What's, what's going on right now is that I'm really trying to get money reallocated from, from those cleanups into tent encampments, which can transition into these same tiny home villages you've been hearing my colleagues speaking about. You can do this. We can all do this and we can have a win. We can, we can have a win for, for the county. We can have a win for the city. We can have a win for, for the homeless people. We can have a win for BLM's demand for, for defunding. We can actually show them how funds can be moved into, into resources. We can do this together. Homes Now will be glad to come to bear with any, any resources that we can help you with, to help, to help set that up so that we can do, so we can get a few, a multiple, you know, a handful of good camps up and pull people out of the, out of the bushes and quit spending hoses and hoses and hoses of money on these cleanups. This is where the money's going, people, to move people literally across the street, as Mary noted, to, to, to just move people, to trespass people from an entire block. Where are they supposed to go? Some people can't take shelter at the mission. Not only they don't want to because of religious reasons, some of them can't. They have dogs. It can't be split up as a couple. There's various reasons. I really appreciate all the work you all do and I hope that you'll follow this tightly. We're doing this right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Buchanan, I don't have any other hands raised at this time. If someone would like to raise their hand, please click on the hand icon at the lower area of your screen. Councilmember Buchanan, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, we shall continue. I will close the public comment period and we will move on to natural resources.
I'm not able to start my camera, Kathy. It says host has stopped it. Okay. I don't think that's doing that bad. Okay, natural resources. Yeah, thank you. We had one item in front of natural resources today. Pulling this up, actually, I'll do this by memory. The Lake Wacca work plan, the 2024 work plan, which was before the Natural Resources Committee back in February, it went to the Lake Wacca Policy Group, which is the City Council Sewer District Work Group. It was supposed to go to the Joint City Council Sewer District Meeting in March and that was canceled because of COVID. So it was brought back to us with a resolution to approve the work plan and that came out, Natural Resources Committee approved 3-0. So I so moved that to council.
We have that motion in front of us. Any discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner? And I don't think she's joined the meeting.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent. Next up is Council's Finance and Administrative Services Committee. Mr. Byrd?
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is AB 2020-255, Request Authorization for the County Executive to Enter Into An Interlocal Agreement Between Wacca County and Skagit County for Participation in the Youth Marijuana Prevention and Education Program in the Amount of $26,000. Pages five through 15 in the packet. That passed in committee 2-1 and I so moved.
Discussion on this motion? Mr. Byrd?
This item and the next item are very closely, we're basically the same and just for different counties. And for the record, for people who weren't a part of the committee meeting earlier, didn't see it, I was the vote against the committee. Both Councilmember Brown and Kerschner voted in favor of. My reasoning for that was that I do support the programs, but I felt that the way that the budget was outlined and the lack of measurable kind of data and results that we were looking for wasn't there. I want to see that included. So I voted no in lieu of, as it lacked that information for me. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, let's vote.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Carol Frazee? Yes.
Kathy Kerschner is absent.
That passes six, or excuse me, five to one. Councilmember Byrd opposed and Councilmember Kerschner absent. Go to AB 2020-258, Request Authorization for the County Executive to Enter Into An Interlocal Agreement Between Wacca County and San Juan County for Participation in the Youth Marijuana Prevention and Education. Oh, you're supposed to read this, Tyler, I'm sorry.
This was part of the outsourcing of my job that we talked about.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No, okay. AB 2020-258, Request Authorization for the County Executive to Enter Into An Interlocal Agreement Between Wacca County and San Juan County for Participation in the amount, or in the Youth Marijuana Prevention and Education Program in the Amount of $26,000. Pages 16 through 26 in the packet. That also passed in committee 2-1 and I so moved.
Okay, thank you. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner? Kathy's absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
That also passes five to one. Councilmember Byrd opposed and Councilmember Kerschner absent.
The next item is AB 2020-260. It's Resolution Requesting Authorization to Make An Application and Enter Into A Grant Agreement with the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office to Develop An Outdoor Sports Court at the East Cal, or East Wacca Regional Resource Center. Pages 27 through 48 in our packet. That item passed in committee 3-0 and I so moved.
Discussion on the motion? Please call a roll.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent.
Thank you. The next item is AB 2020-267, Request Permission for the County Executive and the County Council to Enter Into An Agreement for Funding Support and Implementation of the Duffner Ditch, Culver, and Flood Gate Replacement Project. Council Acting as the Flood Control Zone District Board Supervisors. It's pages 49 through 58 in the packet and it passed in committee 3-0. I so moved.
Discussion? Mr. Byrd?
I'm just going to mention to everyone watching, we discussed all these items in committee earlier today and the council members all had an opportunity to discuss these and get feedback and answer our questions. So lack of conversation on our part at this point is because we already had that opportunity and had our questions answered. We're not just running through them, but thank you.
Further discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Byrd?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent.
The next item is AB 2020-268, Request Permission for the County Executive and the County Council to Enter Into An Agreement Between the Ag Water Board of Wacca County and the Wacca County Flood Control Zone District Relating to Funding Support for Participating, or Participation in a Flood Integrated Planning Process Flip. Council Acting as the Flood Control Zone District Board Supervisors. It's pages 59 through 66 in the packet. That passed in committee 3-0 as well and I so moved.
Discussion? Discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent.
The next item on our agenda is AB 2020-269, Request Authorization for the County Executive to Enter a Contract Between Watkin County and Washington State Military Department in the Amount of $400,725. It's pages 67 through 112 in our packet. That passed in committee 3-0. I so moved.
Discussion? Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, I just wanted to state something that was said today by Sheriff Alfo, and it's in his memo. And it says, "Participating Agencies Will Not Enforce Title 8." That's the U.S. immigration law. I just wanted the public to know that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Frazee. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner? Absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Abstain.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes five to zero with Councilmember Donovan abstaining, and Councilmember Kerschner absent.
The next item we have on our agenda is AB 2020-270, Request Authorization for the County Executive to Enter Into A Contract Between Watkin County and the U.S. Department of Justice in the Amount of $10,000. Pages 113 through 126 in our packet, and it also passed in committee 3-0. I so moved.
Hey, discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Kathy Kerschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent.
The next item we have on our agenda is AB 2020-271, Request Authorization for the County Executive to Enter Into An Interagency Agreement Amendment between Watkin County Flood Control Zone District and Washington State Department of Health for Support of the Pollution Identification and Correction PEC Program in the Amount of $447,732, or a total amended contract amount of $1,047,732. Pages 127 through 160 in the packet. That was approved in committee 3-0, and I so moved.
Hey, we have that motion in front of us. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Carol Frazee? Yes.
Kathy Kerschner is absent.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent.
The next item is AB 2020-273, Request Authorization for the County Executive to Award Bid Number 20-33 and Enter Into A Contract Between Watkin County and Boss Construction, Inc. for the Swift Creek Channel Excavation and Oak Coals North Repository Development Project in the Amount of $644,554.61. Pages 161 through 179, and that passed in committee 3-0. I so moved.
Discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent.
The final item from finance is AB 2020-275, related, uh, sorry, Resolution, Amending Resolution 2019-061, Amendment Number One, Relating to the Salary Schedule and Policies for Unrepresented Watkin County Employees. It's pages 180-183 in the packet, and that passed in committee 3-0. I so moved.
Discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Bird. Uh, now from the committee of the whole, we have AB 2020-263. It was an item we were unable to get to this afternoon. It's Request Authorization for the County Executive to Sign A Proposed Interlocal Agreement Between Watkin County and the Cities Relating to Interim Procedures for Amending the Countywide Planning Policies. Uh, we've, we've had several staff reports on this, uh, in the, over the last few months, but is there anybody here that has any additional information for us? What is the will of the council? Well, there is Mark, okay? Mark?
Good evening, council. I'm just here if you guys have any questions. Uh, this is that, uh, authorization, uh, for the exec. This has been, the interlocal has been signed by all seven of the city's mayors, and so we just need to make, we just need the exec authorization to, to sign it as well. These are temporary, uh, uh, temporary process to amend the county-wide planning policies to be consistent with the Buildable Lands program. We'll be bringing those forward to the Planning Commission this fall, so you guys will probably have them early next year, so.
Okay. Councilmember Donovan?
And this is the version that council has seen a few times and made changes to in terms of who can propose things in this buildable lands process. And I think we talked about that when it was introduced, so I would move to, um, approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Donovan, seconded by Frazee. Discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner, uh, absent. Uh, something that's not on, at least it's not on my agenda, but we did vote on today out of the council committee of the whole, and that was the resolution that Councilmember Donovan brought for budgeting priorities. I don't have the number of that in front of me, but, um, I'll let Todd propose that, um, that formal motion. It did pass this afternoon by the council recommending it to the, to the full council.
Yeah, and I, um, believe the number is, uh...
Two thirty-four.
Two thirty-four, okay. That was two ninety-four. Um, but with the recognition that, um, Mr. Ellenboss found a typo in there, the very, one of the very last lines, "send should be sent," um, and Kathy Sable found that I had spelled Wira one wrong, because Wira is actually W-R-I-A. Why don't we call it Wira? But, um...
I think it was, "it should be send and not sent."
Okay, exactly, yeah, exactly. So with, with, with those, um, modifications, corrections, I would move, we approve this.
Second.
Donovan moves. Frazee seconds. Discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner? Is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes four to two with Councilmembers Bird and Ellenboss opposed, and Councilmember Kerschner absent.
Barry, you're muted.
I'd been using the spacebar. I was cheating. Um, next up is AB 2020-106, Resolution Docketing Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation Amendments. Do you have anything new to add for that, Mark?
Uh, not really. You guys, uh, I think in commi, uh, committee of the whole, uh, approved, recommended, uh, adopting this. This Exhibit A in the docket reflects that recommendation. It includes, uh, just two of the three privately initiated ones that were proposed, uh, the rezone and the Rural Forestry Designation Amendment Proposal for the Nooksec Falls area.
Okay, Mr. Donovan?
Talking through the electronic agenda and this stuff. Um, so you said two, the, the, the Nooksec Falls one is in there. What was the other privately initiated one?
It was the, uh, one and a quarter acre, uh, proposed rezone from neighborhood commercial to residential rural.
Right, and we just, we discussed that, and, okay, thanks.
You, council made specific, uh, or committee of the whole, there was specific recommendations on those two privately initiated ones. They had requested a waiver of the fee, and the committee of the whole had recommended not to waive those fees, so you'll need to make that motion as well.
Councilmember Bird?
Uh, Barry, just, uh, order, the, I think we need a motion and a second for this, for discussion, and still, correct?
Still on a staff report. But did Mark just say we needed to do a motion to get that fee part in, or we already do?
You, uh, the committee of the whole recommended, uh, not waiving those fees.
Okay, now I would entertain, you're correct, Councilmember Bird, we did not have a motion on the table yet. Uh, so could we, uh, could we get one?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, discussion? Councilmember Donovan?
Um, and I, I know there's stuff on this docket that goes back many years, um, but it does sound like we're actually making progress on one of those things that, that have been put on there in 2016, or...
Yes, we, we, we've definitely been slowed, uh, by, by the COVID, but we are making progress. We're chipping away on those things. Some of those things, uh, have a lot of public involvement process, a lot of advisory committees, multiple advisory committees in many cases, and so it's, it takes time to cross over between those groups, but we are chipping away at it.
Thanks.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kerschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
That passes, uh, five to one with Ellenboss opposed, and Councilmember Kerschner absent. Next up is AB 2020-259, a resolution. Yes, Mark?
Uh, can, can council make another motion specifically about the waiver of the fees?
Okay, I'm, that's what I was trying to ask earlier. So, yeah, I, I moved that we waived the fees on the privately proposed item, but I need to know the actual docket number, and I can bring you that.
Sorry, was that, just for clarity, a move, a motion to waive the fees? Because last time we made a motion not to waive the fees.
I thought, yeah, I thought that Mr. Brown had made a motion in committee or committee of the whole, and, or Ms. Kerschner had, and we decided not to waive the fees.
That's right. So those would be for PLN 2020-03 and PLN 2020-04.
So, so for clarity, that was for the rezone of the rural commercial, and the commercial zone of the rural zone, and the other one was for the forestry, to remove the MRL designation.
So, yeah, so my motion will be that we do not waive the fees on the 1.25 acre, uh, neighborhood commercial to residential rezone, which is 0003, and we do not waive the fees on the, uh, Nooksec Falls proposal, which is 0004. I thought we'd already do that, but I'll move it now.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, Councilmember Ellenboss?
Kind of feel like it'd be cleaner if we just didn't do anything, because if we don't waive the fees, we're not waiving the fees. You know what I mean? Like, if we just leave it as it is, the fees will be charged. So I don't understand why we're voting to not waive the fees when fees are there. See what I'm getting at?
Yeah, that's a good point. They requested it, though, is that the issue, Mark?
Right. Right.
So, Mark, do you need council action to, to, uh, convey that to those applicants?
Right.
Okay. So we have a motion. And a second. Uh, discussion? Okay, let's call the roll, please.
Sorry, Barry. Can you, because it sounded like we were going to waive the fees on everything else but those two based on the motion, so... I think it'd be cleaner just to make a motion to waive the fees, and then if you don't want to, then everyone could vote against it, that didn't support it, and it would fail. And then we go back, then Mark could go back and easily say, hey, we brought it to the council, the motion was made, it didn't pass.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, at my understanding, and I'll defer to Mark on this, is if the proponent makes a request for a fee waiver, we have to act on that. So the default is, this is actually, this is really kind of confusing, yes. But, but is that, I guess that's a question. If, if a proponent makes a request for a fee waiver, do we have to actively say no to the request for a fee waiver? Even though the default is, well, the default is they'd have to pay the fee, so we're acting on their request. That's why I think that this motion's...
Right. There's, there were two decisions to be made. One is whether to docket them or not, and the second then is whether or not to charge them the fee or not. So that's, that's sort of how we have to relate to them.
No, it actually, it's to not charge them the fee. The default is to charge the fee. We have to vote on the request to go away from the default and not charge the fee. I'm sure that didn't clarify it, but...
I believe it is a motion to waive the fee, and then that would have to be voted down. Um, and, but, Mark, before that, out of curiosity, we just voted to docket it, so now if the motion to not waive, the fee did not pass, are they going to be forced into paying the fee now? Yeah, I'm worried that they've made a decision to apply and be docketed with the assumption that it'd get waived, and may not want to have it docketed anymore if they have to pay the fee.
So the way the rules are written, uh, if you vote to docket, which you have already, um, and then you make a separate decision on the fee waiver, because that's a separate question. Uh, if, uh, they have 30 days, um... Uh, if, uh, they have 30 days, um, to, if the fee is, if you don't grant the fee waiver, in other words, if they have to pay the fees, then they have 30 days to pay those fees and initiate, um, the, the docket item and the application. If they don't do that, it automatically, by code, it just becomes moot and it, and it voids, so.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Donovan, do you want to draw that original motion and we just remake it as, really one?
No, I think the, the motion was that they would, but I intended it was that, that they would have to pay the fees. So how, how should we phrase this motion? That like, we're denying their request for a fee waiver? Is that a better way to put the motion? Okay, so I move that we denied the request. So, so actually, I withdraw my initial motion. I will propose that we deny the request for the fee waiver.
Second.
That was easy.
We have a motion and a second. Is everybody happy with that one? Okay, all right. Okay, let's call a roll.
Tyler's gotta stand up.
Oh.
More, all right.
Don't do it, Tyler, don't do it.
Open up my door's box. No, um, we're, the motion is denied. I'll be voting against the motion. I, I actually think that moving that parcel of land out there in the Kendall area, um, away from mining zoning that it has now and into something that, um, would be a tourist attraction and draw more people out there would be incredibly beneficial both to the environment as well as the economy. And I'm highly supportive of that and the fact that the property owner has spent so many years donating his property in a way that the community could come out there and access it and park and, and view the beautiful natural attractions that, that are there that are on his private land. So, um, I, I think that he, although hasn't necessarily paid a financial sum up to this point, he has, uh, contributed in kind more than, than what we're asking for, for the $2,000. And in the long term, this would have a far greater impact on the economy if it went through, and so I'd rather see it, um, be waived, so. That's what I got.
Councilmember Ellen Boss?
Mark, I thought I remember you saying something like the fees were nine or 10 grand. What, what exactly are the fees?
Uh, approximately $9,600, yep.
A piece?
Yes.
Hmm.
Right, my original statement times five now then.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, I was gonna go back to the, the committee discussion, um, cause I, I agree with Mr. Bird, the, uh, the economic benefits, and potential environmental benefits of the, the particular amount Baker, um, Nooksec Falls thing, could, could be very positive, but I think the discussion in, in our Committee of the Whole or which committee it was, the economic benefits that the proponents are getting out of both of these are, are pretty substantial, so. But I, I'm just recapping where we were before, but, but I, but I get what you're saying.
Councilmember Ellen Boss?
I, just for good measure, I, I would love to waive everybody's fees, but I, I, I just have a hard time picking and choosing which fees get waived and which ones don't. I feel like everybody pays fees in the form of property taxes, but, um, yeah, I'm, I'm stuck, cause I see what you guys are saying, I really do, but, you know, I don't, this one's horrible. This one, I'm conflicted.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, I probably shouldn't do this, but, good ask, Mark, a substantial amount of funding for PDS is from fees that we charge so as not to have to raise property taxes, so now I can be even more conflicted about it.
That's right, see, uh, two thirds of our budget is from fees, so that we don't have to draw off from the general fund.
Councilmember Bird?
Um, Mark, you might not know this, but if he was actually to move forward with that plan out there and add a couple of these cabins to the property, would that increase the amount of tax revenue that that property then generates for us?
Uh, most likely in the, in the long term, yeah.
Okay, so in the long term, if he did this, the county would actually generate that, that revenue back?
Remember, this, what's docketed is just a change in the zoning code, a proposed change in the zoning code to, to allow such development. It isn't, it isn't approval of any specific development proposal on that particular site. That would be another, another process to come in, so.
Uh, Portland has a, a really interesting economic development model, and what they do is they will take money and they will basically grant it to a, a business and say $10,000, and the business will then use that to upgrade the storefront. And in doing so, the value of the property goes up, and then Portland makes more tax revenue off of that over time and are in excess of the $10,000 they granted, and so it creates that economic viability, but it also generates more revenue for the municipality at the end, and it's been enormously successful, and I kind of see this as the same way. I mean, we might take a small hit in the, in the beginning, but the value of the economy, the value of the, the environment and the long-term, like, benefit to the council would greatly outweigh that if he moves forward. That, that, that's my argument though, I'm done.
Mr. Ellen Boss?
I'm just gonna apologize, cause I know this is probably way more long and drawn out than it needs to be, but Mark, could, um, could anybody make an argument that there's some sort of injustice or mistake that happened with the way the zoning is right now? And we're fixing that mistake or, or, um, I, I, I guess when I read the 1.25 acres, it, it almost feels like that whole area, that whole community would much prefer housing than commercial, and so maybe we're, we're fixing something for them that maybe never should have been? Or, or is that not ever been brought up?
Um, that, that particular zoning was done back in 1999, so, uh, there is literally no one here that was a part of that or has a rationale for why that happened or, or what the rationale was at the time, so. We don't really have any information, any kind of background on it. Other than that corner was intended to be commercial.
Councilmember Donovan?
All right, last thing, um, Mr. Bird just mentioned that there are some really cool programs in Oregon like that, that are kind of based on a tax secretment financing model that, um, are challenging to use here because of our state laws, and that's actually something if you all want to kind of poke your state legislators about to try to change laws to use those sorts of things and make those things more usable here, where you can, when tax values go up and those, those dollars then kind of like benefit from a specific district to a specific district, but, um, that's kind of getting off topic here, but, um, but I, but I like, I like the ideas, but, the concept, but it, our laws are a bit different in Oregon for that unfortunately. Although it might work with fees, but that's, cause it's not a tax, right? That's not.
Any other discussion? Okay, to clarify, the motion is to, uh, deny the waiving of the fees, okay. Okay, let's vote.
Kathy Kerschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Allen Boss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
I think you called me, I can't hear, but yes.
That passes, uh, five to one, Councilmember Bird opposed and Councilmember Kerschner absent. Next item is AB 2020-259, it's a resolution amending the Homeless Strategies Work Group to establish two-year terms for council-appointed members. And I can tell you that what, the reason for this is that we were trying to align it with the other appointees from, uh, other, uh, nonprofits and so on, other governmental institutions. So we just wanted to get the, uh, the terms, uh, evened out, so that's the reason for this, so.
Move to approve? Actually, Mr. Ellen Boss had questions, hold on.
Mr. Ellen Boss?
Do I need to wait till there's a motion on the table to discuss it?
Yeah, I second.
It's seconded, so you can go ahead, Ben.
Okay, so real quick, um, uh, bear with me here, the, so this will stagger people more or this will be a wholesale change out of the, of the team? Um, you, you know what I mean? Like, everybody's gonna get reappointed all at the same time? Or now we've made it so we've staggered how people are appointed?
I'll let Kathy answer that. She's, she kind of manages the logistics of this group, so Kathy, can you shed some light on that?
Yes, Kathy Holka with the Council Office. This is just to align the terms of the Homeless Strategies Work Group members who are appointed by Council, which includes four of the members, uh, to align them with the annual, um, renewal of all the board and commission members, so that happens all at the same time at the end of the year in December. And then to establish that they are two-year terms. However, this, this first one would be through December of next year, at which point, um, there, you know, there would be a vacancy list, um, published for all of the Council, uh, boards and commissions.
Hey, so I guess, I don't, I'm not sure that answers my question, so on this particular board, you would not have everyone? Like, I, I, I guess what I'm thinking is, is for continuity's sake, you probably don't want to change out the entire board at the same time. Would that happen with what we're doing here or, or would it make it so half the board gets changed out? Or two thirds of the board gets changed out at a time?
I believe the total number of members is 23. Most of those members are designated by the agency that's listed to be represented. There are only four council-appointed positions, and those would all be up for renewal at the same time. And that renewal date would be the end of the year, which would align with all of the vacancies, um, of other boards and commissions, so that the Council Office would, uh, advertise those vacancies all at once.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Allen Boss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
And Kathy Kerschner is absent.
So that passes six to zero with Councilmember Kerschner absent. Uh, we're moving on to council appointments to boards, commissions and committees. Uh, we have AB 2020-138, an appointment to the Homeless Strategies Work Group, homeless children and families position applicants. They are Joel Kennedy and Emily O'Connor. So is, uh, Kathy, is this one seat for two applicants or is this two seats?
This is one vacancy position and there are two applicants.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ellen Boss?
Yeah, just to help me out, what, can you tell me what page this is on in the printed copy? I don't have it in front of me.
Looks like 471?
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Barry, I, I move a, an appointment of Joel Kennedy to the position.
Okay. Do we have a second? Or do we have any other nominations? Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, Councilmember Frazee? Councilmember Frazee?
And, and I move to move, uh, Emily O'Connor, consider it.
Absolutely, we can appoint, we can, uh, nominate both, both applicants.
And I second that as well.
Councilmember Frazee?
And I just wanted to, um, let everyone know that Emily O'Connor has come to most of these, um, Homeless Strategy Work Group sessions and has spoken there, and she's there about every time, and she's the head of Lydia Place. And she sees families firsthand of what homelessness does for them and has a bigger, a broad view of what that can do to the family and the community. Just wanted to say that for her.
I agree with Carol, but I'm very torn on this, cause I know Joel, and I know he's a, he's a father and a husband of, of a family that has, uh, seven or eight homeless kids that they've, they've been going through for a year. And I met him in, uh, January and my wife and I actually, uh, did some music with him and his large family to kind of, uh, they were trying to give back to the First Congregational Church, which did the, a lot of homeless programs up there. So, uh, I, Joel's an excellent applicant, as is Emily. I, I totally agree with Carol, so this is a tough one for me. Mr. Ellen Boss?
I totally agree with you, uh, Chair. I think they both look like wonderful applicants. Um, I guess, as always, I don't know if they're available to address us, but I, I always like that if they are, I, I, I don't know if I'm seeing everyone that's on the, on the meeting right now, but if they are here, is there any way they could address us?
If they're in the audience, they can raise their hand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you're in the audience, either, either Emily or Joel, uh, click on the virtual, raise your hand at the bottom of your screen and Kathy will see that. In the meantime, go ahead, Mr. Bird?
Um, thanks. The, you know, the, I did nominate Emily, not, uh, only because, you know, I know Emily, and when I read this originally, before I got to the application part, I made up my mind, I was gonna vote for her, um, just because she has done such a great job and she is so engaged and she would be so phenomenal in this position, but then I read the applications and that experience that Joel's gone through and what he described in there with his family and, and the housing incidents, I just felt like it would be invaluable to have that firsthand experience from, from a family member who's gone through it that has kids for the specific position, and that was kind of more confirmed for me when it, later on in the packet, when I saw that Emily was also applying for the, the Commission on Sexual and Domestic Violence and had been appointed to that. So I felt good that she had gotten a position and that we'd be able to leverage that talent, that, that expertise and skill that she had in the county through, through the other board, um, and hopefully will. So I, I felt that Joel would be a good placement on, on this specific position, but she would be fantastic. I mean, either way, we're not gonna lose, right? So.
Right. Any other discussion? Mr. Donovan?
I was gonna move to nominate both, just cause I, when I read these, I just assumed there were two positions, um. So.
Would the, would the Council care to, uh, amend the resolution and add a second position?
If we could do that by ordinance, not, by resolution or not by ordinance, that, that would be.
I think this group was, was created by resolution.
Okay, well, I would, I would move to, um, find a way to get both of them on there.
I will second that. Mr. Ellen Boss?
We might have had a mo- we might have had a motion out already though, so.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. We got a motion from Tyler to, um, appoint, um, Joel, and then I think, which we probably need to take care of that, and then I think Carol made a motion after that to do Emily, which is probably out of order unless she's making an, an amendment to Tyler's motion, um.
Let's do an easy fix. I would request that, uh, until we resolve the addition of, of an extra member, I would like to have members withdraw those motions, and we can always re-enter them if, if the motion goes down to expand the group. Tyler?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of that. The only thing I would like to know is, how's that affect the number of people on the committee? Will it now be an even number? And for those council members who attend, is it common that everyone shows up? Would an even number kind of mess it up, and if so, would we need to add basically two additional positions to keep it? So that it's an odd number of, of, or, or committee members?
I don't think we've ever had a time that I can ever remember that we, that that was an issue. Carol, what about you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's such a large group that, um, there's always someone missing, or, and I don't know the exact number we have now, but, um, it's such a large group that some people can't come every time, so uh, I don't think it would be a problem.
And it always seems most things are worked out on a consensus level with that group, uh, 90% of the time, so. Uh, I think we're okay there, Tyler, but that's a, it's a good point.
And some member Buchanan, this is Kathy Holka. There are currently 22 positions, um, that include- Um, that includes the three new positions. So if you were to create two positions, um, in that particular category, it would total twenty-three members.
Well, see how smart we are? We got that right. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, it's not, not clear to me. I mean, I, don't get me wrong, I, I really like, um, Emily. I like both of those. It's not clear to me that she qualifies for the definition of this particular position anyway. Although you have a bet, you might have a better understanding of what the definition is. But it does say homeless children and families position. Is there a requirement that they have directly experienced it or not?
I don't believe so. I think the combination of the two would give us experience from both the administrative level and, and the, the, kind of the care, and the, all the way down through the experience of homelessness that Joel has. I think it would give us a very broad look at the whole issue from that perspective with both of them.
And I want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not opposed, in fact, I'm supportive of finding a way to appoint Emily as well. I just wasn't clear that that was, that was technically a correct fit.
Councilmember Bird?
Uh, I like, I, I think that's a very valid point that Councilmember Brown brought up. Um, in this kind of position specifically, I, whether it's specifically outlined in the resolution or not, I, I do really feel that it's important that whoever that is has that lived firsthand experience in there. Uh, so if it's not in the resolution, I'd like to see us update the resolution, so it, it is specific, and it is a lived firsthand experience. With that said, what we're really talking about is creating a, a brand-new position as well. So it doesn't have to be a brand-new position that has that same definition. So whatever the new position is, we can create it, so it defines or would encompass Emily and what she does too, if that makes any sense. Hopefully it does.
Yeah, it makes sense. I just don't know how we get there, but, uh, yeah, council member Frazee?
Yes, I believe from my memory, um, the work group came up with these, with new categories, just to get more representation, and I believe when we were talking about it, with someone who could, um, one, one thing, when Emily would come to the meetings, at the end, she'd be like, well, no one's talking about families, because we'd be talking about individuals, and not people who experiencing homelessness, uh, with families. So, um, I think that's what we just wanted, someone to be a voice for families, and to know the experience of that. And if we are going to add two, I could, I will withdraw my motion.
Yeah, I'm following council member Frazee. I, I will draw my motion as well.
Okay, so we now are motionless. So do we have a motion? I will move that we, uh, expand that, uh, that position to two applicants, or to two, to two seats?
I'll second that.
Okay, Buchanan moves, and Donovan seconds. Discussion? Okay, uh, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes one, two, three, four, five to one with Ellenboss opposed, and Kirschner absent. So now, uh, I would just, I'll nominate, uh, Joel Kennedy and Emily O'Connor for those two positions.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Uh, Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes six to zero with council member Kirschner absent. Next is AB 2020-248, uh, appointments to the Noxious Weed Board, District Three. Uh, applicant is George Cos. Do I have a motion to nominate? To appoint, excuse me?
Motion to appoint? George Cos?
Second.
Frazee moves, Bird seconds. Discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with council member Kirschner absent. Next is AB 2020-249, appointment to Drainage District Three, Commissioner Position Three, and the applicant is Paul Sanga. Do I have a motion to appoint?
Move to appoint?
I'll second it.
Uh, Donovan moves, Ellenboss seconds. Discussion? Please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with council member Kirschner, uh, uh, absent. Next is AB 2020-250. This is another appointment to the homeless strategies work groups, Schools Position. Uh, the applicant is Lisa Marks. Councilmember Ellenboss?
Move to approve?
Thank you, second.
Uh, we have Ellenboss motion and a Bird second. Discussion? Sorry, Todd, just a, just gotta beat my head. Please call a roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with council member Kirschner absent.
You're muted.
Next is executive appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. First one is AB 2020-264, request confirmation of the county executive's reappointment of Jody Sykes and Jana Thinkbonner to the Northwest Senior Services Board.
Move to confirm.
So, hey. Donovan moves, Brown seconds. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Kathy Kirschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yep.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with council member Kirschner absent. Uh, next is AB 2020-265, request confirmation of county executive's appointment of Nicholas Evans and Melane Harrington to the Behavioral Health Advisory Committee.
Move approval?
Second.
Bird moves, and Frazee seconds. Discussion? Councilmember Bird?
Ben, you just gotta say it, stop raising your hand.
I'm trying to be respectful of the process here.
Fair enough.
Just, any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
And Kathy Kirschner is absent.
That passes six to zero with cap, council member Kirschner absent. Uh, next is AB 2020-266, request confirmation of county executive's appointment of Peter Coy to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Councilmember Frazee?
Move to confirm.
Councilmember Donovan?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner is absent, and Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes five to one with Ellenboss opposed, and council member Kirschner absent. Uh, AB 2020-272 is request confirmation of the county executive's appointment of Emily O'Connor and Krista Torres to the Commission on Sexual and Domestic Violence. Councilmember Frazee?
Move to confirm?
Second.
Councilmember Brown seconds. Council, council member Frazee's motion? Discussion? Let's vote.
Tyler Bird?
Yeah, yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes six to zero with council member Kirschner absent. Uh, next is, uh, introduction items. We have items one through seven. Do I have a motion to introduce? Councilmember Donovan?
Move to introduce.
Thank you.
Councilmember Frazee?
Second.
Any discussion on any of these items? Okay, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Uh, yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner is absent. Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes six to zero with, uh, council member Kirschner absent. Uh, any, uh, that's the end of our agenda. Are there any other items? Councilmember Bird?
All right. I do know the rules on this, but I was thinking about it, and so I, I wanted, oh, I said I was done arguing this, but, um, I want to make one final kind of plea for this, and, and if it's worthwhile, and, and anyone agrees, then they can, uh, make a motion to reconsider. But as it relates to the, the fee waiver on that project out there, what kind of struck me was, uh, here just a second ago, was this idea that how much money would we spend? I, I mean, if we looked at it differently, and we, we flipped it around, how much money would we spend or invest in, say, the Port's Economic Development Team to generate that kind of economic revenue locally? I mean, if, if he's asking for ten thousand dollars to be waived, if he puts one house out there that generates two thousand dollars a month over the year, it's twenty-four thousand dollars a year, and, and some of the economic data reports using locally that that money will then turn around tourism dollars seven times in the economy. I mean, we're looking at a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars a year in economic impact that comes into the community for a ten thousand dollar investment. I mean, over ten years, we're at almost two million dollars in, in revenue. If, if we were to take county funds from the general fund and invest it locally, it feels like we'd spend way more money than that to, to drive less value, and so I just wanted to bring that up and see if anyone would reconsider.
Councilmember Brown?
Carol was first.
Councilmember Frazee?
I was just, um, with taking that overlay off of the mining, it, we, I think we talked about, it increases the land value, I believe. I don't know if Mark's still on here, but I believe it really increases the land value. Um, so I feel like I know he's voluntary, or given that land up, you know, for us to use, and, um, but because of that, the land value increase, I think, yeah, I, I, I'm torn about that too, but, yeah.
Councilmember Bird, uh, Brown?
Yeah, I think Mr. Bird's argument is, is equally applicable to anything. If I was to build a house, there, there's gonna be an increase in property, property value, therefore property tax, so why don't I get mine subsidized if someone builds a multi-family dwelling? Uh, a kangaroo farm, as Mr. Donovan has just put up. Uh, I mean, all right, this is gonna be a competition. Um, I mean, is, anything anybody builds theoretically should, should increase the property tax. So why would we just cherry pick to do it with one person? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we do it with everything? A- and the answer is, because then everybody else has to pay for it.
Oh, I was gonna say, sold, done.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
Couple things here. I see both the points, but I tend to kind of lean in towards Councilmember Brown's. I don't, I don't, I don't like the idea of everybody else having to pay for, for these two almost spot zones, if you will. Um, and I, I would also like to point out that kangaroo is also red meat, and it's very good, in my opinion. I've, I had some when I was at Huxley College with, uh, my professor, Chris Morgan.
It's tasty, I've had it.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm sorry, I have to beg to differ. Unless you eat it raw, it's, it's as tough as boots, so no, it's not. Sorry.
It's not as good as black Angus, I'll put it that way, but it is decent.
I will concur with you, Mr. Ellenboss.
Okay, so I don't see any reconsidering going on, Tyler, but.
It was worth a shot.
It was worth a shot, okay. All right, any other, other items? Mr. Donovan?
I don't usually comment on things from, um, public comment, but we had, um, Mr. Pilo, I, I, um, we all got an email from him June fifteenth, and I, I, I don't know how to respond to that stuff. And he mentioned nobody, it, it's, 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 if you haven't read the email, it's really worth reading, because it's, it's just the, the frustrating um, things we all probably know people are going through the same thing, not being able to visit people in, in a care, care home, and, um, I honestly don't, I don't know what to say to him, so I know people in the same situation. Um, but I hope he heard. Again, he ended up doing public comment at, at the point that wasn't open sessions during a public hearing, but I just want to make sure he knows we all heard him, and, and, um, if I had an answer, I would have responded to that email, but it, it's, it's, it's worth a read if you haven't seen it yet.
I definitely was not gonna stop that story for.
No, 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 no. I just want to make him know that we, we heard it, so.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I, I actually forwarded his original email to, um, Erica, I was hoping she could get back to him with a response, but I, I, I agree with you, it's, it, it's gotta be really tough. You're married to someone for sixty years, and you can't visit them in the station that life, but, but I feel great sympathy for them.
Mr. Sidhu, and then Mr. Bird?
Yeah, I, I just was gonna say that I did talk to him personally when he sent the first email. I called him back and, uh, talked to Erica, Erica and Greg Stern, and then I believe Erica called her, him back as well. So, yeah, it's a tough situation.
Mr. Bird?
Yeah, um, yeah, I, I'd kind of like to know, or have a discussion about what we could actually do there. I mean, it, it is tough, and I, I don't know how you stop someone from a, that, I, hell, I'd go in anyway, right? I mean, I think a lot of us would, so the, uh, what can we do in this kind of situation? Because it, it can't be uncommon. It, it, there's gotta be something. I mean, is it that we set up a separate room, or can we use the Motel Six facility? I mean, we have all the services and staffing there already, and tons of rooms available. I mean, could we make that a, a location where he could go in, and she'd still be able to get the, the level of service that she needs there, or, and what are our options, and, and who's, who's considering that right now?
I, I don't know who's considering it. I don't think we have looked into it in that way. The other part was that his wife is, has. The other part was that his wife is, has dementia. And, and I think that was one of the things that was in consideration. It was more for Mr. Pilo, uh, Palillo's satisfaction and with the patient, you know, or the resident. She may not even know the difference. So I don't know what is, it's a good answer or not.
Did you have your hand up, Ben, a second ago?
Yeah, but the mood got really serious. Um, I feel for the guy and I read his email when it first came through and I didn't respond because I didn't know how to respond. And, uh, I, I applaud you, executive, for reaching out to him. But one thing I did want to say to you, um, Mr. Sado is, are, I thought that we all agreed that we liked the beard. Did we get overruled by Mrs. Sado?
You're muted, so.
Can I hear?
Hello? Sorry, that was my phase two. I thought we moved on. Mayor Seth, you should see him. He's like, looks like me now.
Like you now or like you?
No, no, like me before.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, this is, this issue of visitation. So there's a couple of things I think we have to accept and give him. You can't have anybody walk into uh, an aged care facility like that because even if they think they're, you know, that, that, they're not and have COVID, we just don't know, right? And, um, so maybe you, you say, okay, well, you come in and you're in a Tyvek suit and you got a mask on and you got a shield on. Well, the problem is, is if, if I was, if, if I was him and I went to visit my spouse like that, my spouse is likely to freak out. She's not going to recognize me. She's got dementia. If I got a face shield on and all the rest, it's, it's, it's just wouldn't work. You can't have that person come out into another facility because they could get it and then bring it into the facility. So maybe the solution is to set up a tent or something outside the facility with a dividing wall of clear plastic and on one side, people can come in from the public and, and sit down. On the other side, the person can be brought in and at least you can see each other through the plastic and talk. But it's, it's like an isolation tent. There is no potential for cross-contamination. But it does, it does allow both sides to, to connect with each other. Maybe something like that's a solution, but I don't, I don't support someone just walking in and I don't support dragging someone out and then bringing them back in again. Because the population is still vulnerable.
Hey, I wonder, I mean, could we not do something where if we could maybe he goes to Motel Six and stays and we test them and he stays there for two weeks and we take care of him, make sure that he's isolated and then we can guarantee that he doesn't have it. And then once we know he doesn't have it, he's allowed to go in and see her. Um, if he, if he doesn't have it, he's not going to bring it in, right? So it, it'd be it's a big commitment. I get that and it's, it's entirely disruptive to your life as well, but there's, there's got to be something, right? I mean, that's, that's gotta be hard on people, too.
Well, I, I, I think the other thing is that how many of these cases and how many other people will make a case? You know, like if this was one case, I mean, the whole county has these kind of cases all over in small cities, major cities, Bellingham. So that was the other consideration that it's like a slippery slope of, little bit, you know?
Mr. Brown?
It, I think we have to, with all this stuff, we have to come up with a policy that works for everybody. And this, this, you know, this guy sounds very genuine, sounds like he can be very responsible, but the next person may not be. And that's the challenge. I mean, New Zealand's got, got a good story on this. They had eliminated COVID inside of New Zealand. And then they had two sisters who came in from England to visit with their, their other sister who was dying. Well, they agreed to go to two weeks of quarantine. And then the sister's condition started to deteriorate and they requested a waiver so they could leave quarantine early. They left after one week. They went and visited her sister in the hospital and then they tested positive for COVID when they came shortly thereafter. So and the whole country's sort of saying, ah, we nailed this thing. We'd eliminated it. And now we've got these people wandering around again. So it's it's really dangerous to set up something that allows for exceptions.
Councilmember Frazee?
You know, I actually like, um, Councilmember Bird's idea. I mean, if we have that whole facility anyway, um, the Byron facility and people want to stay for two weeks and they can apply to stay there. Yeah, I, I just think, you know, if we all think of it like if it was our spouse, what, what we, what lengths we would go through in order to see them. So if there is something we could do like that, um, we're, I know there's a lot of, there might be a lot of people in the county that, that, but he's the only one who reached out to us. And what if we had a waiting list? And if we already have things set up at Byron Avenue, it might be a possibility.
Mr. Bird, then Mr. Donovan, then Mr. Brown, then Mr. Ellenboss?
The, uh, Pandora's box. Um, thanks, Carol. The I, I really, I, I think it's important that we do something and I, I, I understand what we're talking about and I understand the risk that we're talking about. And I mean, it reflectively, like I argued so hard to put in stringent kind of controls in the very beginning for senior homes and these kind of facilities. And, and so it's, I, I get it. And yet when I'm, when I'm looking at this problem, I, I think Carol and her analogy is spot on. And I mean, that makes sense to like, what if it's your mother and your father or your son and daughter, right? Uh, and we know that there's similar situations that have happened and occurred with people in the hospital and that would probably have to be an entirely different kind of process. But at the end of the day, we're five months into this and we don't have a firm date for when it will end or plan necessarily to get out of it. And this could easily go on for another six months or more. And how long are we going to expect people to go without seeing their loved ones? And be okay with that? We need to come up with a solution, I think, and have a scalable solution that allows more people to utilize it so that we can address this issue because both individuals, it's going to be crucial to their health, their mental health, their physical health, their family health, their wellbeing, everything. I mean, there's so much data about that out there. I think it's important for us to, to look at and consider.
Mr. Donovan?
Um, I brought this up to make sure that, uh, the gentleman spoke, knew that, knew that we'd heard him and to get, get us all reflecting on his email about his mother and his father. Um, I, I don't think it's appropriate to then just say we need to do something and start legislating on the fly. But I, I do agree that, you know, there, there's, there's maybe something that can be done, but so, you know, think about it. Talk to a health official about it, but it's just, it's a really complicated situation. It's not something we're just going to like sit here right now and, like, you know, we got ideas. But, um, but I don't think it's something we're just gonna fix right now. Um, but hopefully people can send ideas to the health department folks. Um, but it's, you know, there, it just represents one of these hugely frustrating things like, like, like Ben was saying, like, you know, when we got the email, I didn't know how to respond to it and we're not going to figure it out right now, but, um, but I appreciate people, you know, trying, but I, um, I, I don't think it's the place where we find a policy solution right now, but, but it's good that we're thinking about it.
I wonder if we could ask the administration to have, uh, something brought forward from the appropriate staff, some proposals that we could, uh, sink our teeth into. Okay, Mr. Brown, then Mr. Ellenboss?
Uh, whatever the solution is, is, is it needs to be one that allows a person to visit on the fly, not go through two weeks of quarantine because if, if that person went through two weeks of quarantine, went to visit his wife, then goes to the supermarket or whatever case would be, and then wants to visit his wife again, theoretically, he's got to go through another two weeks of quarantine. So I'd, I'd rather some, whatever the solution is, it's one that allows them to come on a short notice. You know, the reality is a lot of people in these aged care facilities that, that they're, they're in the, the final stages of their life. And you could get a phone call saying, we don't think your, we don't think your father or your spouse or your, um, whatever family member is going to last much longer. Uh, if you want to come and visit them, you need to come and visit now. So, um, that's all.
Mr. Ellenboss?
So here's my, here's my real feelings on this. Um, it's absolutely ridiculous that we even have to have this conversation. We're all humans and I look at this end of life type situation and I've heard of folks that are in there and they have told their family members they would prefer to just go than have to live the rest of their days in isolation like this. And that's why I say it's, it's sort of in, inhumane to to continue on. And, and I guess I look at it, eh, eh, on a common sense level and I say, um, there is no way to ever mitigate all risks. And these people are getting visited from healthcare workers that are coming in, taking care of them and then going home to their families every day. So why can't we come up with a common sense solution to this? But then I also think about the fact that uh, I don't believe it is the county council's rules that are keeping that, this from happening. I, it's more of a state level issue. I would love to sign on to a letter um, asking for a solution to this because I believe a solution to this is probably very easy. And it would, it would circle around, um, the fact that you can never mitigate all risk. Um, and that, uh, we do have tools available to us if, you know, both parties are, are willing to, um, do what they can to mitigate risk in order to see each other. I think it's incredibly possible to do, but, um, unfortunately, I don't think it's something that we can do at a council level. Um, but I would love to, uh, I would love to send another letter.
Anything else? Councilmember Bird, then Mr. Sado?
Todd, I don't disagree with you that, that it's not necessarily something that we should be solving offhand on the fly. Um, but knowing, you know, it has been a couple of weeks. He's contacted everyone and he still feels the need to show up to a council meeting and testify because he doesn't feel like there's a solution. Uh, to me, it's important that we leave this conversation today with either some solution or someone in charge of bringing a solution within a certain period of time so that we know that it's, it's going to be addressed. Um, I, I just don't want to see this go into the ether like everything else that, that does.
This is Sapaw. Uh, everything doesn't go to ether. Tyler, you've been here more than two years. Things still happen. And, uh, I think that I, 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 I will take upon that, uh, I will make another try and talk to the, uh, health department and few other people and maybe contact hospital. There may be other situations like that too. So, or maybe see, is there another best practice in another city or another state? But this is not unique to us. Uh, you can do some searching. I'm not promising I will have a solution for you. But if I have some ideas, I'll share with the council.
Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, I think the words I was looking for earlier may, cruel, cruel and unusual kind of comes to mind and these folks aren't even prisoners. So, um, you know, I know that there's a lot of compassion for uh, people that are incarcerated on this, um, council. And so, you know, if we kind of think of it the same way, these people haven't done anything wrong and they're almost, it's almost worse for them um, with, with, with what's happening to them. And it's, it's unfortunate. It's more, it's unfortunate. It's not even close to a strong enough word.
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Bird?
Yeah, uh, so executive, it, it sounds like you'll take an approach on this and, and is this something we can have added to our next, uh, committee or next council meeting under the COVID updates, uh, so that we can get any update. And, and I don't necessarily expect you to, you to specifically find an answer to this. I appreciate you, you saying that you take it on. But if the health department or even if we could task UFI Command with this specific thing to help us solve it, um, if we have someone that's working on it and they could bring back a progress report on, on what they've looked at and what they're considering and what their next steps are, I think that would be very, very helpful. And appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking online now at the actual facility and it appears they have a, a truck loading area that probably goes into a warehouse or storage area. I, I don't know why they couldn't just put up a large plexiglass panel inside that area and have him visit on one side and have her brought out on the other side. And maintain infection control. I think it'd be a very simple solution. It's climate controlled. It's probably something that could be replicated as most of these facilities have a drive-in loading dock. So they can load stuff in the weather.
Mr. Donovan?
Well, um, I have many executive chats with, uh, folks in the health department. And then they'll have to talk with the private care facilities, but Google nursing home bubble, I think is where I saw this stuff. Um, is it nursing home bubble? And, you know, there's all these different things that are, I think, physically similar to what Mr. Brown was talking about where it's either just a two-sided tent thing with plastic in the middle and people actually can stick their arms, you know, in plastic sleeves and I don't know how well that works for everybody, but, um, I mean, that's something that's probably not super cheap, but, but just, just, you know, one, one thing that, if and a lot of this is, you know, it's, it's not, it isn't in the realm of the state, it's also in the realm of the, the care facilities and, and their liability and their risks and how they do stuff, but I, I just, I, I
I was gonna say that, uh, this should not be only on me in the sense that you guys are all also welcome to search and see if you come across something. I think we, this is something we should all together look for and find a solution.
Thanks. Kind of sounds like a good idea, Sapaw. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, to Mr. Donovan's point. Uh, I'm just sorry, I just sent something to the council, but I sent the wrong link. I'll just send it, uh, again, but Mr. Donovan's point is quite, quite valid. And in fact, you can see in what, in what I'm just sending now. It does allow some degree of physical contact without breaking quarantine.
Yeah, I understand. It's not necessarily something we legislate. The more we can educate, get the, get the health department, maybe put more pressure through the executive, but also, um, getting those ideas out there because ultimately it is the care facilities that, that will be doing this, but, um, whatever we can do.
Uh, I'll send Mr. Sado a copy of this as well.
Do we have anything else for the good of the order?
You could probably buy this, pay for this with kids' dollars too.
Okay, folks.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. We'll see you in a couple of weeks. Uh, we are adjourned.
Thank you.